Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this November 16th special meeting of the Olathe Board of Education. Mrs. Carpenter, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Drummond? Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Polan?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Here.
And we have a quorum to conduct our business. Dr. All, you want to do a brief overview of our agenda for this evening?
Yes. We're going to begin the special meeting by taking care of some district business. There will be action items on construction management service for the Service Center Edition, which was information provided at last month's meeting. An action item is considered for -- I'm sorry, forgot. The board will take action on construction management service for the Service Center Edition, of which the board received information on at the last meeting. The board will also take action on KSB legislative policy positions to provide guidance to the board's representative. And the board will also take action on a process to address charter school applications that was not in place for the board to use as it considers any charter school applications coming forward. There are two future action items for the board's awareness, one on Prairie Trail Junior High School Enrollment Relief Plan, and another future action item on Olathe USD 233 legislative positions. Following the business meeting, there will be a special study session on the Bond Task Force findings regarding reconfiguration of grade levels, sixth and ninth. And the board will receive some additional information and then have an opportunity to ask questions, get clarification, and have board discussion.
Thank you, Dr. All. Board members, if we'll move to our first item of business, which is item 6.01, Construction Management Service for Service Center Edition. As Dr. All just mentioned, this was an item that we had brought to our attention previously at last month's meeting. And unless there's any discussion about it or questions, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
President, I would move to approval that we accept the proposal from Universal Construction Company in the amount of $99,000.
Dr. Drummond, could you press your microphone button, please?
Thank you. President, I would move for approval of the bid before us, the acceptance of proposal for Universal Construction Company in the amount of $99,154 and 64 cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond and Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Drummond? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Next item is 7.01, the KASB legislative policy positions. They've been provided to us previously. Unless there are any questions or comments regarding those, we would like to just give our consent to Mr. Parker as he attends the convention and is our voting delegate.
Mr. Gilmore, I just have a clarifying question on this. We, as a board, have our own legislative positions. So is our intent here tonight simply to acknowledge the recommended changes that are contained within this document, but not necessarily approving of all the legislative positions that are within?
Yeah, we're looking only at the direction of the grammatical changes in several of those items in the first few pages of what's in your packet there. There are some changes being made to correct some language and some other changes being made to correspond with changes in law. There's four or five items there. That's the items we're referring to.
So it's not necessarily our acknowledgement that we necessarily agree with all the legislative policies in there? Is that correct?
Yeah, that was not the intent to have that discussion tonight. No, we have our own legislative positions we're going to be discussing as we go forward. This is merely dealing with the underlying changes in the KASB's current language.
Thank you.
Well, since I'm the delegate and I'll be the voting delegate, I would move for approval of the KSB legislative policy positions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilhelm. Is there any further discussion before we vote? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you. The next item is 7.02 regarding the charter school application process.
Mr. Gilmore, I'd like to just comment, if I could, just briefly on --
Please do.
Okay. Appreciate the board's support in regards to the -- KASB is the Kansas Association of School Boards, which is made up of -- Dr. George, how many school districts are in the state of Kansas? I'm sorry, I put you on the spot. I was going to check that today, and I got really busy and I forgot to check it.
It's right around 300 right now. It used to be about 305, but --
The membership in KASB is about 298 school districts. There's two school districts in the state of Kansas that are not members of KASB. So in KASB, you have -- and there are 15 regions, all the way from Olathe to Westkin, Kansas. We call that the west. They're about five miles from the Colorado border and all the way from Hugaton to Atchison. And so the KASB is made up of 298 school districts and 15 regions representing the entire state of Kansas. And the real struggle at the Board of Directors is to balance the needs in Olathe, a school district of 25,000. And we've heard that our growth last year was larger than 85 percent of the school districts in the state of Kansas, to a school district in Westkin, Kansas, who have probably less than 100 in the school system. So what we try to do at KASB is we try to find a balance for the needs of Olathe to the needs of Westkin. So it's a lot of diversity and a lot of different needs and a lot of different issues. The issues in Westkin, Kansas are different than the needs in Olathe. And the issues in Olathe are different than the needs in Westkin, Kansas. So that being said, I don't necessarily, and I think as a board, we probably would necessarily agree with every position statement that KASB brings forward. But we have to remember that KASB brings those forward in the spirit of trying to balance it for all districts and to do the best job that can be done for an organization of that size and that magnitude for every student in the state of Kansas. And that's the same issue that the legislature wrestles with every year. Our needs are different than other school districts. So I appreciate the board's support in this, and I know that we may not individually or personally agree with -- I don't personally agree with every statement that's in there, but we try to strike a balance. And I look at this as doing this for the greater good of every student in Kansas. Just like when we make a decision on the board, we try to make that decision that's for the greater good of every student in Olathe. And we try not to be parochial in those decisions. And I try to do the same thing, sitting at the KASB Board and at the Delegate Assembly, knowing that we have to strike a balance. So I appreciate your support in this this evening. And I know that philosophically, some of the things we may not agree with, but it's for the betterment of every child in Kansas, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. We appreciate those comments. I think they were well said. Appreciate your leadership on behalf of our board with the KASB. Next is the 7.02, the charter school application process. You will recall, we received a charter school petition last month, actually, the day of our board meeting. We recognize that in the record at the end of our meeting last month. And we have been working with Dr. All and staff and even our legal counsel about how we go about the process of not only receiving, but also reviewing for completeness, not just in an effort to get to the merits of the petition, also, first of all, making sure we comply with what Kansas statutes require of us. So we have developed, trying to mirror what's in statute, this process that you have before you. And if -- I would like to just take a few minutes to walk through it and then see if there are any questions on behalf of anyone on the board that we might be able to stop and answer. And so if you'll bear with me. In the portion related to receiving the petition, the first step is that we have to actually receive it. The clerk needs to receive it and recognize in the record that we have received it by December 1st. That's per Kansas statutes. We have added language in our process to say, we strongly encourage if there are future petitions, that they be arrived to our board by the 1st of October to provide us time to deal with the petition. That's not a statutory requirement. That's just something on our part we're requesting. The board clerk will distribute copies of the petition to each Board of Education member and the superintendent, which has been done. The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the petition, which we did at our last meeting. The next section of our process deals with what starts off the step four, reviewing the petition for completeness. And included with that is a key elements chart, which has been developed in conjunction with some information from the State Department of Education. One of the things that we have to do as a board is determine whether or not the application is complete. And that's one of the things that we'll be asked to do in the future with a specific petition that's before us. And not, again, not speaking to the merits of the petition, but whether or not it's been complete so that we can move to the next step. And it triggers some dates in the process. Once we deem it complete, we'll provide feedback to the petitioner. If it's incomplete, we need to provide feedback to the petitioner so that they can attempt to make it complete. And I'm at step five. If it is complete, then we go on to step seven. We schedule a public hearing. We provide notice as we do for any hearing. And at a public hearing, we'll have the discretion to request a presentation or a report from not only the petitioner, but also from others, including our own staff, however we might think we need to see some information related to it. That's step seven. The next section is the actual public hearing, which is referred to as step eight. We'll have that public hearing, as we would conduct any public hearing. And then finally, step nine, after the public hearing, is the approval or nonapproval of the petition, which you'll see in there that we have a statutory requirement that after the public hearing, we have 30 days by which to make a decision and have an ultimate decision date of no later than February 1st in order to respond. If we approve the petition, it becomes our petition as a district to the Department of Education in Topeka. That's why that February 1st date is important. If we deny the petition, we must specify our reasons in writing to the petitioner. Within 30 days from the date of the notification of denial, the petitioner then has the right to request a reconsideration and submit an amended petition. We must then act on -- we will then act on that request within 30 days of its receipt. Whether we approve or disapprove is an action that requires communication to the Department of Education. So that's kind of a brief synopsis of what we have gone through. Want to let you know, we've consulted with Mr. Norris, our legal counsel, in this process as we've put this together. And I want to thank Dr. All and Dr. Banakowski and for all their help in helping put this together for us. And we're taking action tonight to approve the process by which now we will deal with not only this petition, but any petition we may receive in the future. Are there any questions about any step in this process?
Mr. Gilmore, what is staff's intent in regards to evaluating the completeness of the petition? What's that process going to look like, Dr. All? And are board members going to participate in that process?
Mr. Gilmore and I discussed this, and yes, board members may and should participate in the process so that each of you would have an opportunity to determine if you see, from your perspective, or question whether there's a completeness to any of the items in the application. And then what you could do to facilitate this. I would be glad to facilitate those questions for you in working with your board president, Mr. Gilmore. And you can either share those with him or me, but we could facilitate that together. And then, secondly, if I have any observations or the staff have any observations, we would share those as well. So I think collectively, we would try to determine that step of the completeness of the application as it fits the Kansas statute, other legal requirements, and sort of those key elements that we talked about.
On step five, where it talks about complete or incomplete, stating that there will be given feedback to the petitioner if the petition is deemed incomplete, will the board also get a copy of, you know, what feedback is given to a petitioner on the incompleteness of that document?
You know, we will be the ones decisioning that it's incomplete and then have Dr. All communicate that, and I'm assuming we'll all receive a copy of whatever that communication is.
That's because I think that we, as individuals, may look at this and --
In regards to the chart of required key elements, where did we get that at? That's the basis for our evaluation. Where does that come from? How do we establish that? How has that been established?
Dr. Banakowski, would you respond to that question, please?
I'd be happy to. In working with some technical assistant from the Kansas State Department of Education, Mr. Norris, Mr. Gilmore, myself, Ms. Dugan, we had an opportunity to make sure we looked through the charter school law. And this really just reflects what's included in the law. It references Kansas statute right there at the top. And this is really simply putting in a chart form all the required elements. So there wasn't anything added really to that. The additional considerations back were also mentioned by KSDE when we met with them, such as the charter petition is written in accordance with federal and Kansas state charter school law. So these are just really considerations straight from the law.
One of the challenges, for the benefit of the public and board members, one of the challenges we've had in developing this is that the State Department of Education has issued no regulations with respect to this statute. So we have the responsibility and the fiduciary duty to receive the petition and to deal with it appropriately, but we have no regulatory guidance by which to go by. So we've pretty much just focused on the law as it's written and tried to line all this out in accordance with how it was approved by the legislature.
As we are reviewing this proposal, I have two questions. The first has to do with, and I'm looking specifically at number one. I know there'll be some others that would fall in this category. But if we, as a member of the board, have some question about, for example, on number one, a description of the educational program, including the facilities that will be used to house the program, should we feel free to contact members of staff to clarify what they would consider to be necessary to be included in facilities and so on and so forth for other items in the proposal?
Yes, I think staff would be a resource for the board members on any questions that you might have. It would be one of your resources.
And then my second question has to do with our timeline for reviewing this application. We have dates on here when we have to respond and so forth, but what would be our target as far as determining if the application is complete or incomplete?
If I'm looking at the timeline as you are, and we've got a short timeline here with backed up to February 1st, I think it would be helpful if we could have that determination about completeness by the December 7th board meeting so that the petitioner, in terms of completeness, that we would have an opportunity to inform if there was anything incomplete there, to have an opportunity for them to respond again. And so that would just be, that's not talking about merit, that's determining completeness at that particular point, because the petitioner would have an opportunity and must have an opportunity to complete anything that was deemed incomplete, just as part of that first phase of implementing the statute.
This is a learning process for us. As you all know, we're developing something we've not had before. And I'm trusting that as we go through this process, we'll learn how to improve it ourselves. And if we have another petition in the future, we will have laid some groundwork for how we deal with that. So am I here to say this is a perfect process? Probably not. But we've taken a really hard look at this, and I appreciate all the input that we've had from the various sources in putting this together, and I think it's a great first step.
Prepared for a motion, then?
I am, if you are.
Okay, I move that we approve the procedures for receiving, reviewing, and screening charter school petitions.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Ashley, seconded by Mr. Churchman. Any further questions or discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polan?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item, which is section eight, deals with future action items. Don't necessarily want to spend time discussing those tonight unless there's anything specific you have questions on or new issues you want to discuss about any of those two items on that. That's the Prairie Trail Junior High School Enrollment Relief Plan or the Olathe USD 233 legislative positions. We will have time in the future for discussion on the legislative positions, but if there's anything there that you'd like to discuss, we can take time to do that. Otherwise, those are just there for future reference.
Mr. Gilmore, just two brief comments. First, on the Prairie Trail Junior High Enrollment Relief Plan. Just throughout the thought for the board to contemplate on about, depending on which path we choose to go down, whether it would make sense to look at potential boundary scenarios sooner than maybe what's outlined here solely for the purpose of looking at how it would impact other issues before us. Just a comment there. With regard to the legislative positions, I think, once again, just for the board's reflection, to me, that it would seem to behoove us more to become focused more on a priority list of legislative positions, maybe a lesser amount rather than more. And potentially, if we were to do something of that nature, wouldn't preclude us from having some ancillary positions that may accompany that. But I think, to the extent that we could have a identified list of priorities, it would, in my mind, be more impacting to our delegates that then have to go and represent those.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Any other questions or comments on those items? Well, hearing none, I believe we'll move on to section nine, which is the primary agenda item tonight. And Dr. Banakowski is going to present agenda item 9.01, reconfiguration of grade levels, Bond Task Force findings. Dr. All, please, go ahead and comment.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Banakowski for, you know, putting together the presentation tonight, but also encourage the board, as we're going through this process, there are going to be opportunities for discussion. And we're hoping, as a staff, that we get questions from the board, any opportunities for clarification, any desires for different or additional kinds of information as we go through here. So some of you have heard aspects of a quick review that she's going to do, but there's also some new information tonight. And want to make sure we have everybody on the same playing field as far as the background of information before the discussion. But again, wanting very much to have your questions and do that clarification and do that follow-up. We have time to do that. And so tonight is our look at this particular piece of the Bond Task Force.
With that, I'll begin our, this evening, our special board session. It's exciting to have an opportunity to visit with you about this topic before, and I know many of you've had pieces of this topic, as Dr. All said. This is my outline for this evening, starting with a brief recap of our journey of academic excellence, if you will. Going to provide some new information about solutions not selected by the Bond Task Force and kind of capitalize those pieces. Review a little bit of the benefits, but really focusing more on three areas brought forth by board member questions, benefits of not doing, including challenges and expectations will be an area that we look at. I am supposed to be mic, so if you thought that I was just standing over here with fun of it. So this may not be working quite right. Let me make sure I'm on. It wasn't tied. Okay, well, maybe a battery problem. I'll stand over here. Thank you very much. As we talk about a brief recap, if you will, of the journey of academic excellence, I will beg your indulgence for a moment and be a little less brief than you might thought I had been. But I was working on this late at night, which is a challenge in and of itself. You sometimes get reflective at night because it's dark. And so as I was thinking about our journey of academic excellence, I actually thought I had to go back just a little bit further. I had to go back, actually, to about the mid-1980s. So that should scare you right there. But let me do this on one slide. Back in the mid-1980s, we did not even have a school improvement process. We didn't have action plans. We didn't have curriculum guides. We had very little assessment at that time. Of course, we were a much smaller school district at that time. We began studying effective schools and decided we wanted to make sure that we were good schools, but we were also improving schools. And we noticed we had some concerns with our Title I schools and the achievement at those Title I schools. And some of you can remember parts of that journey. And by 1993, we had turned that around, and our Title I schools, our first school, Ridgeview Elementary, actually achieved the Blue Ribbon School. So that was part of our academic excellence journey. And certainly, we also know at the same time, and Mr. Gilmore will remember this very deeply, the state of Kansas was studying a whole new approach to school improvement and looking at outcomes. And there was much turmoil, if you will, in discussion in that particular process. But by 1992, the state of Kansas changed this process, and it really aligned with the process we had already selected for school improvement. And we actually piloted that in 1993. At the same time, we were doing lots of research on what works in schools and looking at good effective strategies. And three things I might highlight that came out of that, lots of things, but three highlights. Teaming. In 1991, we started our first teaming at grade seven in our schools. 93, we decided that parents were so important, we actually added, for the first time, secondary parent-teacher conferences. And by 94, we were adding our first full-day kindergarten for our economically disadvantaged children in a couple of our Title I schools. Part of that journey, if you will. We also, in that journey, began focusing much more on results. And because of focusing on results, we're able to show changes. We started off our kids in second grade, the beginning of the year, over 30 percent of them were reading below grade level. We turned that around to less than almost 10 percent of our kids at the beginning of the year are reading below grade level. A great improvement there. Certainly, we also, at that time, decided professional development was awfully important. We could not institute changes without professional development. We came along with our Teachers Association, and by 1999, we actually were recognized for our professional development program. And of course, we also added a lot on new educator induction. Secondary schools were not standing still. They were right there, making lots of changes over this time. And Dr. All will remember them very affectionately, I'm sure. We changed from a six-period day to seven-period day in 91. We went to weighted grades. We've changed our graduation requirements several times over those many years. We added our first advanced placement class. Someone asked me that. In 1997, we went to box scheduling in 99. And by 2003, that was when our first 21st century programs came about. So lots of changes at the high school level. And we were working on closing the achievement gap, and that's really been a focus for us. We were recognized by standards and poor for that for 2003. We have not ended that yet. We still have a journey to go there. But we have made a difference for our African-American students, our Hispanic students, our free and reduced lunch students. We've got a ways to go. And at the same time, 2002, no child left behind, quantum impact on our journey to excellence. We have made great progress. We have many places yet to go with that no child left behind, as we look at some of our students new to our country who don't speak English, our students with disabilities. And finally, I'd end with, part of our journey has also been influenced by that whole concept of good to great. So knowing that you really didn't want me to do that whole thing from the 1980s, but just a glimpse, we've had a journey of excellence. And moving toward academic excellence is definitely a journey and not a destination. But let me bring you back a little bit closer. And that is in February 2006, we did a lot of reviewing of our student learning needs at another special board meeting. That was a little while back. And we talked about our learning outcomes and our targets, and we had some on challenged learners, but we also talked about we wanted to make sure we were advancing all learners. And you were provided that information at that time. And at that time, we also talked about some challenges. For example, finding space for some of these new programs that we were coming up with. It's one thing to come up with Read 180 programs at our secondary schools. Well, we also have to have space for them. We also talked about some opportunities that we had to look at related to accelerated opportunities for our sixth and ninth grade students at that time. And we, guess in a nutshell, we moved all the way to March the 2nd, when you put into motion the Bond Task Force. And we were part of that academic excellence, looking at were there any facility implications to where we wanted to go as a district. At that time, we generated, in February, actually, we generated six areas that we could study as a Bond Task Force Subcommittee. And I'm going to briefly recap those six areas. The first two really ended up going to the existing facility Subcommittee. One was finding specialized, finding location for our specialized, special education programs that we had had feedback on that were being moved around. We also had the adequate space for things like Title I Special Education, English Language Learner. Those went kind of over to the existing facilities. We tried to share our work. The third area that we were asked to look at was preschool. The third area that we were asked to look at was preschool. And we really focused mostly on our early childhood disabilities program, which is mandated, and came up with, basically, what we ended up there was saying that we need more space, an additional space over the next five years because that population is continuing to grow. Then we also studied full-day kindergarten, because you might remember at the time, the legislator was, legislation was talking about funding full-day kindergarten. They since changed their mind. But we did study that conversation and brought that forth to the board. But there was also a lack of consensus on that particular topic, so that ended up being kind of moved to the side or tabled, if you will, by the Bond Task Force. And the final area that we were asked to take a look at, related to commensurate opportunities with benchmark districts in the area of advancement acceleration for sixth and ninth. And I know that Dr. All had talked even about those kind of advancement opportunities for our students, even when she was interviewing for the superintendent in our district. So, that's the area that we're going to focus on tonight. Of course, we also use the board decision-making process. And I only want to point out one thing on this slide. You already know we did the decision-making process. I want to point out the word parking lot. You might remember, a long time ago, we talked about that. We were generating lots of solutions to sixth and ninth commensurate opportunities, accelerated opportunities. But we were, as we were looking at them, making sure they aligned with our criteria, some of them, we moved to the parking lot. And those are the ones I'm going to share with you tonight because we've never had a chance to really share those very thoroughly with you. So, let's now focus, that was the recap of the journey. Now, let's focus a little bit on grade six and grade nine. And I'm going to actually start with grade nine. And if we get done with grade nine and you'd like to stop me and have a break after that part, feel free to ask me to take a deep breath. We looked at four solutions deeply in the area of providing accelerated opportunities for ninth-grade students. And you will see some of these repeated as we get to the topic of sixth grade. Here are the four. I'm going to go through each one of them to describe to you a little bit of our journey of why they were put in the parking lot, if you will. The first one was ninth-grade centers. We eliminated this solution, moved it to the park lot due to research and input. And I do want to just draw a reference here. This is different than freshman academies, which are usually connected to a high school or within a high school. These are definitely separate facilities, ninth-grade centers. Some districts have sixth-grade centers, fifth-grade centers. They're separated by themselves. We looked at the research, and two aspects of the research said that this was not as beneficial for students. It added another transition, not only for parents and for children, but also for parents and staff. And that also, the literature said, it was difficult to develop relationship and know kids' needs when it was a less than a three-year program. We looked at some districts that had only a two-year program. Maybe they only had seventh and eighth. And the challenge there is that every year, 50% of your student body was new, and it's difficult to make a good continual program. So, again, and also, our input indicated that this was not as positively received of a solution. So, for that, in many reasons, we eliminated or put in the parking lot this particular solution. The second thing we looked at, which you've already had the research summary on this area, was e-learning and distance learning. First, we had to study the difference between the two. And then, we discussed this option, of course, with our focus groups. Again, this was put in the parking lot as well. And you can see the reasons that we have listed there, and you also saw that in the summary document that you received. Everything from a lack to breadth of curriculum. It was mostly core curriculum, some electives, but that was a challenge in some of this area. Certainly, we also noticed that while this did impact some academic areas, for some students who had the right learning style to be able to be independent learners, we also know that, noticed that it had, did not have an impact on counseling, support, or activities in athletics. And finally, you also noticed in that report, it did have a cost with it, both for physical space and cost of materials. And then, that ongoing cost, yearly cost, for staff supervision and the cost of courses. So, again, e-learning, distance learning was put in the parking lot. A third area that was studied deeply was also offering advanced courses at our junior, right at our junior high sites. And first, we started thinking about what would be that we could possibly offer at our junior high sites, because we wanted to offer things for our ninth graders that they would have access to if they were in a 9-12 setting. And you can see the many things that we started to look at as we were doing our comparison with other districts. As we also looked at that, we also noticed that there were some challenges to this particular solution. First of all, facility implications, somewhat of a challenge, but it really would depend on what courses you're going to, to offer. And we also noticed that some of our courses are multi-grade, so it's difficult to offer at the junior high setting. For example, debate and forensic is not just a ninth-grade class, it has a multi-grade class. As the conversation went further, we also looked at staffing. And this ended up leading us to some difficulties with this particular solution. And first of all, who would those staff members be to go to the junior high and offer these advanced courses? They could be high school staff coming down to the junior high or over to the junior high. Or it could be a teacher hired specifically for this junior high, and they, of course, would be traveling or itinerant teachers. And there's where we ended up coming up with lots of concerns about this particular option. Hiring retention. Would it be difficult to get veteran staff that wanted to be itinerant and move around to schools? Would it be difficult for us to hire staff that were interested in a position that maybe served two or three junior highs, or was both a high school and a junior high position? Certainly, some vertical alignment concerns and loss of instructional time, as well as availability, or the lack of availability for students before and after school because the staff member is, is moving around. The other area that we also looked at with this option was the cost-benefit analysis. And this, this ended up being very interesting as we played out some scenarios. And that's what I provided on the screen, is really a scenario. If we were to add Latin to our 7-9 building for our ninth graders, Latin being a very important subject. I say that only slightly facetiously. I did take Latin for two years, but, okay. But we're looking at a, some, a high, junior high, we might, in one junior high have eight students that are interested, six students in another junior high, nine students. If we looked at that, the question would have to become from a cost-benefit, would we hire teachers for all three sites as they're moving around? Would some of those numbers be too small? You know, and again, we don't know exactly what the numbers would be as they choose between French and Spanish and Latin, whatever else is available. Would we offer it in all schools? And so, then it got to be a question of equity. Certainly, if we combined these students, that would be 23 students if they were being served in a ninth grade in a high school setting. So, cost-benefit was a question we had. We also thought we, we should develop some scenarios, because sometimes developing scenarios helps you to see how that would be implemented if this was an option that we brought forth. And so, we decided that if we were going to limit this, at least we should look at offering German I, Latin, and Algebra II trig. So, we played out what that would look like. We looked at our ongoing staff costs would be somewhere, depending, of course, on who you hire, between 400 to 450,000 annually, every year, for staffing costs. And we really did not fully play out the impact on facilities. Some facilities could handle that beautifully in our junior high sites now. Some would have a challenge in adding some additional, in this case, three additional classroom spaces needing for those particular hours that that was offered. Again, we put this in the parking lot after much discussion and concentration on it for the reasons that you see listed above. And I just highlight a couple of them. Number one, we were only in our scenario looking at three academic advancement opportunities, limited curriculum. Did not certainly increase anything in the fine arts and no additional athletics, no exposure to a counselor that was focused on 9-12. And certainly, some challenges, both with staffing and ongoing costs. And our job was to look at facilities, so we also thought we better bring in the concept of ongoing costs. So, again, another area that we moved to the parking lot. When we talk about the last option that we looked at was the ninth grade to the senior high for increased access and opportunities. You have heard many of these, these pieces, so I don't want to really dwell on these. You've already heard that we looked at results and looked at three pieces of results. And as we compare ourselves with the few districts that we looked at, benchmark districts, we have many positives. But we also had a few areas that we thought we could look at for improvement. We also very definitely looked at access, the ability for ninth graders and what kind of access they had in a 9-12 setting versus a 7-9 setting. We spent a lot of time looking at access and, and what was available in those program planning guides. So, that was two areas that we looked at. We also identified some other benefits in which you have heard through some of our other conversations, both from advanced academics to the 21st century program. Other benefits that you've also heard as well, certainly like, for example, aligning with the highly qualified teacher area. One area that we mentioned in a little bit, but not probably as much as we have, as we've discussed this more lately, is the vertical alignment that's available for 9-12 teachers. And that's very important as we're looking at curriculum alignment and teaching alignment, alignment between teachers. But also, the alignment in preparation for Kansas assessments, because as you remember, there are no Kansas assessments given in grade nine. And to, for our grade nine teachers to align with the 10th and the 11th grade tests that students are preparing for. And that's the whole focus, much of the focus of our high school, school improvement teams, our building leadership teams, is on that focus. So, that's another advantage and benefit that, that we saw. And we saw that as we've progressed along, something that has been brought forth to us. Certainly, we looked at also that there were many positives for many students. And I will highlight just a little bit, we certainly have talked about the accelerated coursework for the upper students. But also, we saw some advantages for some students in some other areas of interest, for example, career technical. It would allow a side benefit there would certainly be that we could access funding for grade nine students because they were in a high school setting, which we can't currently fund. And the other one I would mention is the special education, our students with disabilities. And that has probably come forth more as we've talked with parents of students with disabilities. Our special education site council group has brought forth the conversation about how they felt there were benefits for their students, having the transition programming, being with that case manager for four years, and being connected to those outside agencies and adult services. So, that was a little bit different than what we've talked about before. Well, you know, and I think this is a new piece of information that we haven't talked about previously, and you certainly may have more to add. But you know, there's always benefits of not doing something. And I'm not trying, going to try and get personal. There would be benefits for me personally, but I'm going to try and highlight some benefits that there also would be for not doing this from a wider perspective. And I had folks give me some ideas on this, and certainly, we were able to pick, glean some up from our conversations we've been having around the district. It would not be a change and reduces those concerns, is those uncertainties. So, not having a change has some definite benefits to it. Our junior highs have fewer students than high schools, so that, and our high schools then would have smaller size if we retain them at 10-12, at least for the moment as they are growing. But that could, that would definitely be a benefit or could be a benefit. Certainly, fewer logistics to work on, including athletics. You know, there are a few concerns, at least, with some of our athletic program areas that will have some logistics that would need to be worked out. So, fewer logistics to work on, and logistics to work out, there are sometimes devils in the detail. So, that takes time and processing and people that have volunteered to work on that. I was going to highlight just one other one, and that, that was the bottom one. It reduces the ninth-grade student interaction with older students during the day. Now, we still have student, many students playing up, and I look back because we had gotten this figure last year, about 450 of our students, ninth graders, now played up last year. That was a rough estimate that the coaches and people gave. So, that, but it would reduce if we retained our ninth graders at the 7-9. Again, you could add probably some other ones that might be benefits for not making the change. But these are, it's always important, I think, and I know board members have talked about that, it's important to look at the benefits of not doing something as we look forward on decision-making. Another piece is certainly that no change of this type would come about without challenges. And we, again, brainstormed and came up with some of those challenges. We picked up some of those talking with staff members and parents as well. And some of those challenges would be, similar to opening a new school, human resources is another group that's sitting there thinking, okay, there's some challenges for them that they'll have to work through, changing staff and staff moving. The first year, one half of the high school student body would be new, the freshmen and the sophomores in that very first year. So, again, that will be a challenge, not unlike opening a whole new school, but it will be for that first transition period. And we'd have to look at our ninth-grade program. You know, we already said, as a Bond Task Force, we didn't want to just move the ninth graders up and accept everything the way it is. We have to decide many things. And many of these are questions that our parents and, and staff members are bringing, people are, I put it as, people are wondering. People are asking, question, well, have you decided this? And what about this? What about your support structures? Are you going to have those freshman academies? We've, we've heard talk about that, and would that be a good thing? Are you going to have mentor programs? Are you going, what courses will freshmen be able to take? Will there be some separation between the ninth graders and older students? So, all that would have to be decided in this. So, that is a challenge that brought forth. Certainly, facilities, people want to know exactly what these facility additions would look like if we went with that route. People want to know what are the potential costs for, would there be additional staffing? What, I know ninth-grade teachers would be coming up, but would we have some other need for counselors or other teachers? What about those athletics and activities? So, all those are challenges and that would have to be worked out. Now, the third area that was a question that was asked is, what can we expect if we make this change? And, you know, I tried to play ourselves forward, and I had other people brainstorming with me, it's 2012, 2013. And it's four years after the change has been made, we're graduating our first class that went through a 9-12 school. What could we expect? And the first thing is, it's difficult to project out, in the essence that we haven't created the program that we're projecting a outcome. Once that would happen, you could be more specific. But in talking with folks, and as we looked at this, and talking with our high school principals, our director of senior high education, these are some benefits that we saw that would be brought forth. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of, a higher number of students are enrolled in advanced coursework everywhere from math, science, increased AP results, increased involvement in AP. Increased enrollment advancement, also, in things like international language. Students will have started their international language younger, possibly at sixth grade. They have an opportunity to get up to levels four and five. Opportunity for multi-language, and we know how important that is in today's global world. That would be one area that we might project. And more students prepared for post-secondary, which is an area that we are continuing to help our students. So, those are some of the expectations that we, we might look at. Again, we'd have to build the program to determine specific. So, that, again, was the ninth grade. I look at the pleasure of the board, Mr. Gilmore, if we should go on to the sixth grade and kind of bring it full circle?
Well, why don't we first just pause for a moment and see if there are any questions or comments about this portion of Dr. Banikowski's presentation?
One of the comments that I've heard frequently from parents is that is, are we merely addressing the needs of the more advanced students? And as you were giving your presentation just now, some change in verbiage came to mind that I think would be helpful for all of us and would address the fact that this reconfiguration would be beneficial to all students, at least in my eyes. It would be beneficial to all students. And that is having to do, you were talking about advanced math, advanced science, more levels of foreign language, and the phrase, being able to get deeper into subject areas, came to mind. And I think that that is a good description of what this configuration would allow students to do. And foreign language is an excellent example of that. Science, math, English, again, would be another example of allowing students to get deeper into subjectsary, subject areas and broaden their knowledge in those areas. So, I offer that as a suggestion.
Great suggestion of wording. Excellent. Thank you.
Another, another piece that I would, just from hearing parents and going to a few of those wonderful presentations that were given, the question, some of the questions that parents had is that security of moving students, obviously, and you listed this as a challenge to be able to develop the programs. My question would be, and I know this is a challenge to even ask, but in fairness to parents, for them to understand what that program might look like, is it possible to develop at least a skeletal program, talking about how the transition might look? Not, not the physical transition, but what kind of support? If you're talking about academies, freshman academies, if you're talking about sixth-grade moving to seventh grade, what does that design look like in somewhat of an assurance to our parents and to our students for, for that transition and that support?
Certainly, if the board would direct Dr. All, who would direct us, we could add a little bit more to that picture, which right now is a skele, very skeletal, it's almost, you know, less than a skeleton picture. We could certainly do that. We've had a lot of people volunteer to want to be on design teams, parents and staff members alike. So, we could certainly do that, and I might wait as we move through here and see if that's a desire of the board, something we could certainly do. Well, with that, I, I see that maybe we'll move on to the next area to give you kind of the complete picture, and that is also the grade six area that we dealt with. We had a few more options that were on the table, that were left on the table after the initial discussions. There were six actual areas. You will see some are repeated. And the first one was a K-8 school. There are many benefits to a K-8 school. And certainly, we know many parochial schools are K-8. are K-8, some districts are changing to K-8 that were previously K-5 or K-6. Some of those schools are urban schools, and some are declining in enrollment, so there have some benefits, if you will, related to their facilities. But the benefits are, you talk about a coordinated K-8 program, if you wanted to see what the sixth grade teacher did last year, the seventh grade teacher walks down the hall and has an opportunity to interact with the sixth grade teacher. Socially, fewer transitions. And we did briefly, and I will say, you notice I said, we put that in the parking lot fairly early, because when we talked about the concerns with K-8 schools, they seemed slightly large concerns for us as a bond task force. It is a very wide age span in one setting. You have kindergartners in with eighth graders, with seventh graders, and so we talked about that developmental and social differences, and how you offer programs for some students and still have programs for other students, so that was a concern we talked about. Probably the facilities concern was also a large one, and we were certainly a capital needs type committee. As we looked at, what would we do? Would we combine elementary and junior high into an elementary school? Or would we try and, we combine some elementary schools up with junior highs to create K-8 buildings? You know, how would we make for the compensation and programming if we moved down to an elementary school? Would we get rid of all the more opportunities that we have at a junior high school? What about science labs? Could we, how could we offer seventh and eighth science in an elementary school without? So I have to say, as, you know, paint that picture, it just got very difficult. We felt that the benefits did not outweigh the concerns, and we did not feel that this was an option that we would move forward with very far. Again, something we put in the parking lot. A second thing we put in the parking lot was sixth grade centers, for the exact same reason as ninth grade centers. The third area that we studied was a thing called ability grouping, and this was a very interesting one. First of all, we could hardly define what it was, but it had come forth, so we wanted to, to study it. We had difficulty defining the issue, and we kept trying, and we did look at some things, little recognition of the literature or research as this being an option for helping advance academic excellence. We did look at the concept of departmentalizing, you know, where you have in a sixth grade building, you have three sixth grade teachers, one teaches math, one teaches science, one teaches social studies, two to three classes there, and that's already occurring in many of our sixth grade, in fact, 75% of our schools are already doing departmentalizing, did not provide for any advanced opportunities. So we, we understood that that wasn't quite what was meant initially by the groups that brainstormed this. And then we looked at ability grouping, and there were some concerns with, is this a best practice? There were concerns that as we divide kids into high, medium, and low, some concerns with underrepresented students being in low groups, the lack of the ability for students to share across a different grade level, different ability levels. Still had some difficulty staffing, for example, with pre-algebra, because many of our teachers are not certified at the elementary level to teach that. Challenges in scheduling, our principals hyperventilated ever so slightly, I'm thinking of another pull-out program or challenge to their scheduling that they already feel is very, very challenging, and there was very little support for this. So again, we put this in the parking lot. A fourth area we put in the parking lot was e-learning, distance learning. A little different from when we talked about as a ninth grade option, because as we looked at the literature, less than 1% of the elementary schools and 4% of the middle schools use this option, so it became even more concerning, because it had very little curriculum available that would provide us, it had some, and it certainly took, was noted as being developmentally possibly inappropriate for students of this age level. So again, we put that in the parking lot. The fifth one that we studied was advanced courses at the elementary level. And here, we did very much the same thing as we talked about bringing advanced courses to the ninth grade level at the junior high. We looked at all the opportunities that sixth graders have in a 6, 7, 8 school, and those are listed for you there. We looked at some challenges, that there always would possibly be facility implications. For example, if we brought a math course down, and we wanted to add science labs, there were 31 schools that needed that, and so we looked at that it would have some facility implications, especially since many of our schools were having challenges with their facilities. Another area we looked at, again, was staffing, and this, again, became a challenging area as we initially started talking about this and playing out some scenarios. Again, we could either use junior high staff to come to the elementary school, or hire specific staff for this. These would be traveling itinerary teachers, and again, some of the same concerns, that loss of instructional time, as well as hiring and retention issues. Again, the cost-benefit analysis, and here we actually have some real data, I used our pre-algebra data as we were conversing through this. And we would have four, four schools that I'd list for you there, that happen to be in the same junior high feeder pattern, so we could kind of look at them. You can see a wide range differences in the number of students who both qualify and are interested. Now, we would anticipate that would be a bit higher, because you remember, we said that while we're servicing about 6% of our student body in pre-algebra, we would hope that would be more like 10 or 12, if the transportation wasn't an issue in there. But you can see, we asked our question, would we provide staffing at all of those elementary schools, even there's a wide range in those numbers of staff? Again, that makes it a little bit of a cost-benefit issue. If you had one teacher going through all four of those schools, you can see the amount of lost instructional time in traveling. And again, we provide a minimum of 30 minutes of travel time for a teacher between two buildings, and so there makes some difficulty, again, scheduling at the elementary. Whereas if we grouped those students together, of course, they make more of a classroom set and, and more in that cost-benefit analysis. But again, we were looking at it from, oh, how would we make decisions about which school would or would not get a teacher if they had a difference in enrollment? And we were looking predominantly at the scheduling issues. So that was another area that we looked at. We did develop a scenario, however, because we thought, well, if we were going to branch into this, what would we start with? We started with math, and we looked at providing at sixth grade level, the regular sixth grade math, advanced sixth grade math, and pre-algebra. And we looked at what that ongoing staffing cost would be, about $540,000 per year ongoing cost, and that was at 31 elementary schools, we tried not to project too far ahead. Facility impact, we did a little bit of work, really related also of looking at the needs of the current elementary facilities, and we would probably need some classroom space there. But again, we did put this in the parking lot for many of the same reasons we did the ninth grade, a few different issues there, but it was certainly the limited curriculum offerings, because right now, we were bringing forth only math. Challenges in staffing, no increased time for those other areas we heard about, fine arts, band, orchestra, choir, a physical education, no additional activities, athletic student leadership opportunities. So again, that was an option that we actually put in the parking lot. Well, that was five areas that we discussed very quickly, took much longer in our team for some reason. But our sixth area that we looked at, as you remember, certainly was the sixth moving to the junior high, and I'm not going to repeat many of this, because you already have had this information, and certainly, you, you see on the screen there, some of the benefits that were identified for moving the sixth to the 6, 7, and 8. And you can see some of those there, the time for physical education, et cetera. You can also see that there's a couple new ones I draw your attention to, is the first one on the screen, it allows our sixth grade teachers to focus on fewer content areas instead of all content areas. Many of our teachers, especially if they do depart, do not departmentalize, have quite a number of preparations and have a difficult time focusing. In fact, that's why we're more highly recommending departmentalization now than we ever did in the past, because we need teachers to become specialists in a content area, it is so deep at the sixth grade level anymore. So you can see some of those, and certainly, you know, the increased alignment there was another benefit. Another area that we tried to look at is, was this positive, though we started out looking at advanced and accelerated students, we wanted to look at all students. And certainly, this second bullet there shows you that for all students, we looked at some benefits for choice and exploration, international language, computer technology, increased fine arts, including theater, and more time to learn in the other fine arts area, increased physical education. I also mentioned the challenged learners. 25% of our student body right now in sixth grade participate in some of these specialized programs you see, and that's an unduplicated count. This would benefit would be, it removes the pull-out program, and provides those students an op, an access to a 40 to 50 minute class, depending how we structured access to Read 180 tutorial classes. So again, that was why eventually the bond task force took a look at this being the option they recommended. But again, as you have pointed out, and we've talked about before, there are benefits of not doing this. And I've listed some of those on the screen, and you certainly may come up with others. Again, I started out again with a lack, not a change, and sometimes not having a change is certainly a benefit. The third one that I mentioned is that some, not all elementary schools, has a student, has one main teacher, is their sixth grade teacher, not counting, of course, they have their specialist, their PE, their music, their art, their library, so they do have differences in teachers. But in a few of our schools, 25% right now, they don't departmentalize, they have one main teacher, though there are sixth grade programs in 6, 7, 8 that also have one main teacher. Fewer logistics to work, and I'm bringing your attention to the last one. Some people believe children are growing up too fast, and that staying in the elementary school one more year might slow that down. So there would be, and you, again, would add benefits to not doing. We certainly know that there are those social concerns, we've tried to do an additional study in this area, and we've, you've been provided that previously, looking at that literature on young adolescents, which sixth grade students are, and looking at those similarities between 6, 7, and 8, and grouping those students does have some benefits. And I think that was something new that we picked up on, that we have not shared previously, because it wasn't part of the bond task force, as we looked at the literature on this developmental needs of sixth grade students, we looked at some of the advantage, actually socially and emotionally, of the 6, 7, 8 school, both from teeming, as you see there, certainly the lack of the elimination of the pullouts, but also, you know, the strong guidance by adults, staff, and parents in making appropriate decisions, there's a lot of decision-making going on for, for children of this age. We also looked at how important it would be with any program that would be developed, the parent involvement and parent leadership. There are many needs of early adolescents, and that would need to be the entire focus of that parent involvement. So those were some of the benefits that were identified, and you, again, had that. Many challenges, similar to opening a new school, designing the sixth grade program, you know, we have many people asking, as Mrs. Wilhelm also did this evening, what support structures do you tend to have in place? Are you going to have, you know, mentor programs? What about the transition? What about transitions for parents? What about the guidelines about dances and uniquely identified social things? So those would have to be looked at. I wanted to draw your attention only to the portion here on this screen, because we've talked about it in our presentations and conversations before, is a part on the instructional program that's kind of in red. We've been asked also, could it not be a time for us to revision the entire 7, 8 program as well as the 6, 7, 8 program? And I think part of that is because in some ways, our junior highs have been masters to both middle school, 7 and 8, and high school, the freshman year, and to take a look at how we might want to restructure that whole thing. So again, many people are wondering, and questions have been asked, so that's a challenge. The facilities wasn't so much a challenge in this conversation as in the ninth grade conversation, because wouldn't need additions. But I tell you, what was, has been a question, is what are the potential costs? What about staffing? What does that look like? Is it, you know, going to be, lack of a more, better word, that's not coming to me, wash as we move sixth grade teachers up? Would there need to be some additional staffing? What about counseling? Would we keep them the same number they have now, or? So all those questions, and certainly athletics has an area. So again, let's project out 2012, 2013, four years after we made the change, and we have our first group of kids that are going to be freshmen after the 6, 7, 8. Again, until we build the program and know what access students would have, it's hard to project ahead. We would hope in a higher number of students would be enrolled in advanced coursework, and that would be equitable. No longer would pre-algebra be based on transportation availability. All students would be participating in science in a science lab, and we certainly know how important science is. And the last one I draw your attention to, the vertical alignment has increased. 6, 7, 8, sixth grade teachers are no longer content generalists, but more content specialists to know that content that they're working with the students on, as well as specialists in the area of early adolescents. And, you know, this slide has been used before, so I won't draw it to your attention, except for, again, the significant long-term cost-effective portion of this as why the bond task force went with this as a solution. So that's kind of a walk down memory lane a little bit with 6 and 9, as well as looking at three important new areas, the benefits of not doing, the challenges, as well as what it might look like, what would be the outcome of this particular change that we would be hoping for to have that happen. At this time, I'm available to share with you, if you'd like me to, the input that we have received from parents, and kind of a summary of that. And to do that, I'm moving over here. Screen went in. The first thing is, I might mention to you, we've had many opportunities for input, and I'm not expecting you to read this, because I can't from this distance, but there were a lot of opportunities that folks had, building leadership teams and rotary and classified staff members that have had opportunity to have input into this. And certainly, we've had the important parent sessions, aided our junior highs, our district-wide site council, those four additional community sessions, so we've had an opportunity for input from many people. We also have had that online, and we also have, in some ways, I guess, fortunate, a DVD online presentation, that's kind of the short version that people can watch as well. That's available. At the group, at the sessions, we've had an opportunity for group feedback, we've actually gone around and had everyone fulfill, you can see some of our, we have killed just a little bit of chart paper, and also some recording sheets on the floor there, just to have a visual of. We've asked them everything from questions and concerns to benefits in all areas, though we're focusing just on 6, 9, and additional feedback. So if you didn't get it out early, and you want to repeat it again, we had people have an opportunity at the end as well. As you know, we also had the individual rating and input, you can see some of our green sheets there, that we've had an opportunity to have someone summarizing. As we take a look at that, I want you to notice, as we look at the parent session, the very first thing we tried to summarize, because we knew you'd be very interested in the parent feedback, is an opportunity to take a look at, and you have had this via email, so again, you won't have to read this, but you had information that we provided you via email about the questions and concerns, we tried to list those for you. Anytime that someone had a new and novel idea, we made sure that was added to the list. Many, of course, were repeated from different sessions, so the questions and concerns, everything from why haven't you done this earlier, to questions and concerns about social issues, transition. We also had our parents and, and staff as well, though this is just the parent feedback, the benefits of moving grade nine and the benefits of moving grade six. So that was one area that we took a look at. The next area that we took a look at, as well as was some tallying of that, again, you've had this information, I just bring it forth as a reminder to what you have and have connected there. We took a look at the general overall opportunity to get some feedback, and this is your general piece. While we're not talking about staff tonight in, in our breakout pieces, of course, they have some important aspects of that as well, I kind of asked the tally, there are 35% of our staff that had input into the process, our parents, and 70% are residents, so they have a vested interest as well. And as we look at the parent piece here, the, the right-hand column that you had received earlier, you can see that many of our parents feel that there's some interest in this particular opportunity here. As we also looked at it, we wanted to make sure, as we looked at, when someone said, support with these concerns addressed, what were these concerns addressed? And again, you had these as well, and seems to keep wanting to shrink on me. And that was everything from making sure, and then probably the number one response, make, I support this, but make sure that you have great transition activities in place, make sure you've really taken care of the support and mentoring. And that was the number one in that particular, again, those were people who would have given their support on the tally sheet to the second area there, and that's support with these concerns addressed, 140 or 25%. So that gives you just a little idea of the feedback. Of course, we're not sharing with you tonight the feedback on the technology, the growth in existing facility, and you'll probably want that at some time. So I'm now going to have an opportunity to thank you to sit down, but we've had a long journey, and so I kind of picked a car, as we've had the journey into academic excellence, and we're kind of, I always say to people, we're just a little bit at a crossroads, and for a moment, we haven't stopped our car, because we don't go that slow, but we might be idling for just a moment. And the landscape has changed around us, certainly, in the last number of years since I started my little conversation with 1988. We certainly have more accountability for all students and have high expectations, and the landscape has changed, but we're idling for a moment to decide where we're going to go on our next future. And I also, always have to end with a quote, because it's just kind of me. I picked up this quote, actually, off of Ole Miss North High School principal, Dr. Connie Hanan, had posted in her office, and I thought this was a wonderful quote, because we're all making such important decisions for children, and that we look and we teach them well, and that's such an important, as we open the world up for our children for tomorrow. So with that, if you have, entertain any questions, break, whatever is your pleasure.
I think it'd be a good idea for us to take a comfort break, and come back with questions and comments, is a good point to break right here, so why don't we take a 10-minute break and come back shortly before 7:30.